Good morning.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the August 20th meeting of the Board of Commissioners. We will begin our meeting as is customary with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Would you please rise for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the republic which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. It's a good way to start the meeting. We'll now ask for public comment if anyone would like to speak outside of our panelists here.
The process for public comment, just to cover that, is would be to activate the raised hand button, and we're able to then see that in the list of attendees and call on that person, bring them in as a panelist.
There is a question in the Q and A, Jamie. I don't know if that falls under public comment or not.
I'll type the answer on that one.
Other than that, I'm not seeing any raised hands.
All right, then we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of our previous meeting. If I could ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes of the previous meeting as printed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comment or question, or additions or deletions? Hearing none in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Now, our formal agenda, which begins with Sally Nguyen as our treasurer for her report.
Hey, we had receipts on August the 18th and 19th of $1,184,484.84. Brings us to a total cash of $3,175,845.32. Our expenditures this week were $2,192,914.50. Our tax claim at this today is $4,272.50. So that leaves us a cash balance of $978,658.32.
Motion?
Make a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Hearing none in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So moved.
Okay, Sally. I do have some resolutions. The first one is for Fulton Bank, and it's an escrow account that needs to be set up for planning for for wisers on Thompson Avenue in Lebanon. I don't know the amount, but the money is put aside in escrow for the county.
I couldn't understand that the money is for what was what was the first one?
It's an escrow account that's set up for planning. They must have gotten a permit to do something and need to put this money up until they see what they're doing.
After that, you said something, and I couldn't quite get.
A wiser from Thompson Avenue in Lebanon.
Wiser, okay.
It's likely for stormwater, stormwater work that has to be completed before the escrow can be released.
Got it.
I'll make a motion to establish the escrow account for the planning department.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we administer that account. Any questions or comment? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
I have another one here. We're actually opening our account for our CARES relief block grant. It's going to be a money market account, so I just need approval to open that account.
I'll make a motion to approve the CARES block grant account. What bank is that with Sally?
That's at First Citizens.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we provide for a CARES block grant account at First Citizens. And any comment or question regarding this motion? If not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Okay, the only thing I have to say is let me know when user in the building or can sign these this paperwork.
Okay.
You just get it to Dawn. She can put it on the table where they typically sell it.
All right. I have a lot of other signatures to get also, so.
All right. We'll take care of that. Very good. Anything else, Sally?
No, that's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Now we'll bring in Michelle, Adressa, and Leanne Shank are HR reps.
I don't see Leanne.
That's all right.
I have to unmute Michelle.
May I share?
Sorry, I don't know why my camera's. There we are.
There you are. Very good.
Good morning.
All right, Michelle, you may proceed.
Under personnel transactions, resignations and terminations. Kim Keener, substitute senior center manager, retirement effective July 20th. Anne Barondick, part-time door monitor resignation effective August 8th. Zet Diaz, full-time booking agent resignation effective August 31st. Lisa Ahmed, second deputy controller resignation, corrected date of August 12th. Brandon B. France, enforcement officer, termination effective August 10th. Timothy Heckman, full-time correctional officer resignation effective August 5th. Jerick Showalter, full-time correctional officer resignation effective August 10th. Marshall Whitmer, full-time correctional officer resignation effective August 14th. Mary Haig, DJ clerk resignation effective August 14th. Paula Klein, probation aide resignation effective August 7th. Ethan Cooperstein, full-time deputy sheriff resignation effective August 28th. And Peter Conway, casual part-time deputy sheriff resignation effective August 21st.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignations and terminations as read.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to accept the resignations and terminations. Any comment or question regarding the motion? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Under other transactions, President Judge Tillwalk would like to hire Michelle Werner as a part-time law clerk at the rate of $985.53 bi-weekly effective August 24th. District Attorney would like to hire Elizabeth Close as a full-time district attorney at the rate of $2,384.61 bi-weekly effective September 8th. Sheriff's, the sheriff would like to hire Gio Franco Valdez as a full-time deputy sheriff at the rate of $1,137.4 by weekly effective August 24th.
A question, Michelle. Was this a compromise on the the district attorney hire with the price?
No, it was the requested rate.
Okay, could we vote on that one separately?
Yes, so if we can have a vote for President Judge Tillwalk and the sheriff's hire, I will reread the district attorney.
All right, well, let's.
Make a motion.
Whichever one you want to do first.
For the Tillwalk and sheriff, she said.
All right, I'll second. I'll second that motion, Chairman.
All right, sir. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve personnel transactions requested by PJ Tillwalk and the sheriff. Any comment or question? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same signs. So moved.
The district attorney would like to hire Elizabeth Close as a full-time district attorney at the rate of $2,384.61 bi-weekly effective September 8th.
I'll make a motion to to make that hire.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we hire as per request of the district attorney. Any questions or comments?
I I think she's a good hire. I think that the salary could have been negotiated.
Any other discussion? Hearing none in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It's been moved two to one in the affirmative to hire at the requested salary.
Moving on to salary board. Motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following. Lloyd Souter, salary increase telecommunicator. This is in compliance with the union contract to the rate of $17.84 retrodated to June 14th. And then Brandon Franklin, longevity payment, full-time correctional officer at the prison, a one-time payment of $500 effective August 27th. And then the following are all full-time correctional officers at the prison. All are moving to the rate of $17.14 per hour. All are effective August 23rd. And that's Louis Martinez, David Lesfrenz, Austin Ritchie, and Victoria Morales.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to to make those salary board adjustments.
I'll second the motion, and again, because of the one, I'm going to be voting no.
Well, we'll have to break the motion apart then. Can you be more specific as which one you're you're not happy with?
The district attorney's salary.
Oh, just that's okay, same one. Okay, I thought it was some of the new.
No.
Mentions. Okay. So do we want to amend the motion to include everything on salary board except that one part? Commissioner Ames?
We can do that, yes. Yes, all the salary board adjustments except the new hire assistant district attorney.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. Now, under salary board, we'll need another motion to accept the hire of the request of the district attorney.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the request of the district attorney under salary board. Any comment or question regarding the motion? Hearing none in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we have a split vote, two to one in the affirmative that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have to unmute, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Take two. There we go. Okay.
Okay, under mandated conference seminars, I have Raymond Heaton from the sheriff's office would like to attend the patrol rifle instructor course in Bloomsburg September 9th, 10th, and 11th, $300 total registration fee. Meals reimbursement mandated by PCCD.
Um, I have a question. Is if if does he have to quarantine when he comes back?
No.
I don't believe so.
Not in.
Not in the area that's hot.
No, that's only the states that are designated by the Department of Health as hot states. I think there are 22, but not not in Pennsylvania.
Maybe we have a motion that we can have further discussion.
Sorry.
Motion, please.
I moved.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. The only question I have is it Bloomsburg or Blossburg?
I'm sorry, it's Blossburg.
Well, if you know where Blossburg is, that's a very safe place to go to for.
There's nothing there.
You don't need to quarantine when you come back from there now.
Okay, I don't know where it is.
No.
What county?
Hi.
Near Mansfield.
Oh, yeah, that is up there on the border where there there's hardly anything. Okay.
So we have a motion to approve that mandated conference. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Under non-mandated, I have Nicole Snyder from MHI DEI would like to attend the adverse childhood experiences. This is an online training on August 24th and 25th with no further reimbursement.
I'll make a motion to approve the the non-mandated conference attendance.
And I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved that MHI DEI request. Any conversation regarding the motion? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Leanne.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Jim Dunmoyer to present a grant agreement with DDA. Jim is one of the attendees. If we can bring him in, Jim. There he is, Dunmoyer. Still muted, Jim.
All right, Jim. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't know why my camera's not working, but.
That's a blessing. Thank you.
It looks it looks okay, Jim.
It looks better, I'm sure. Thanks.
Nice to see.
I know you're a junior now.
Yes, nice to see you guys, too. Again, I'll start off. My name's Jim Dunmoyer. I'm the executive executive director of Lebanon County Drug and Alcohol. Today, I'm presenting to the commissioners the five-year grant agreement between the Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs, known as DDA, and Lebanon County, i.e. the single county authority. The contract that I'm presenting today, and I provide each of you with a copy of the contract. The contract runs from July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2025. Currently, in 2020, if you look through the packet that I provided, it breaks down each year as far as funding sources and the amount of money that the county will be getting through DDA. In the current year, 2020, the amount is $1,067,005. If you notice, in years 2, 2021 through 2025, the amount indicated on the forms is $696,830. I just wanted to bring that to your attention because this year, included in that $1,067,000, is the $434,035 for case management, which is a special funding initiative agreement. So that brings a total to $1,067,500 this year. It runs year to year. I am told, I'm pretty confident in the fact that we will continue to get that additional $434,035 in year 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25.
Well, that's great.
So.
That's the contract with PCS.
Yes, that's the contract with PCS. If you recall, we started last year, kind of midway through the year, so we were not able to expend the total amount of funds. However, this year, we started from the very beginning. So we anticipate that we will spend all that money through case management for the entire county coverage. For those who need more than just counseling and therapy, they're able to have a case manager as well. So we're excited about that. Again, our expectation and everything I hear from DDA is that it's not their intention for that money to go away in years 2021 through 2025. So I respectfully ask you, the commissioners, today to sign the five-year agreed grant agreement between DDA and Lebanon County. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the five-year DDA agreement with the state.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion to second to approve Mr. Dunmoyer's request for a DDA contract which carries through to 2025. Any comment or question regarding this motion? Hearing none in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So moved. You have your contract, Jim.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before Jim goes, can I just take a moment to make a little explanation on the CARES fund allocation that's going for mental health and substance use?
Yes, yeah, of course.
Now that the settlement's out there for the CARES funding for the county, the allocations were listed on the funds, where the funds are going or where they're being allocated. And there was a lot of discussion and criticism over the amount, $250,000, that was listed for the mental health and substance use category. And I just want to clarify that because it wasn't, it's not $250,000 because there there isn't a need. I had consulted with Mr. Dunmoyer, as well as Holly Leahy, our administrator at Mental Health, Election Disabilities Early Intervention. And we talked it over on a number of occasions in developing those allocations. And as things stand now, or as they stood at the time of that consulting about that, they're able to meet the needs within the budgets that they have, for the most part. There are also, I think Commissioner Litz may have pointed this out somewhere, there are also other CARES-related funds that are available for those categories and for those for those needs. Understand that the CARES Act is very specific in that it must be COVID-related. So while in every community, including this one, there are always additional mental health needs, unless they're identified as COVID-related and not the the ongoing mental health needs that that we always face. If if they're COVID-related, it can be tied to, you know, some result or or after effect from COVID, then it's an eligible unit of service, whether Mr. Dunmoyer needs, you know, more more units of service for overdose or for treatment or for, you know, overdose prevention or treatment, things like that. That's perfectly acceptable within the CARES Act. So I just wanted to touch on that so that that is addressed, because there has been some criticisms and discussion around that. Also, keep in mind, this is a block grant. So if between now and December, the end of December, there is an identified need in that category that arises, money can be shifted within a block grant from one category to the other. So I just wanted to touch on that. Thanks for that opportunity.
Can I just say something real quick, Jamie?
Sure.
I I would second what you said totally. We have been in contact. We have talked about needing resources and funds, and at the present time, we're not in need of those funds or resources. I have reached out to my local providers to find out from them if they are struggling as a result of the COVID-19 and the conditions that they were put in to provide services to people in Lebanon County. And most of the feedback I'm getting from the providers are that they went through other means to access funds and that they would not be looking for federal CARES Act fund, mainly because they didn't want to, I don't know, double dip. I don't know. So.
Which is, yeah, which is addressed also in CARES. You can't.
And specifically.
Same thing.
And specifically, Jim, we have no need for additional suicide prevention. That was one of the biggest concerns. But you wouldn't know that. That would be MHI DEI.
Correct. As far as as far as Lebanon County Drug and Alcohol goes, we have the we have the funds available to us to provide the services that we have always provided. We're not in need of funds at the current time. You know, things change as the year goes on and as this ever-changing situation we're in. So as I speak today, we are in good shape as far as fiscal operating this department.
Thank you for the reference.
Thanks.
I'd like to now bring in Dan Lyons. Assuming he's in the queue.
Yep. See him there, Jay?
Yeah, he's been pulled in as a panelist.
Morning, Daniel.
Good morning. Good morning. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes, little faint, but go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, commissioners. I'm here to this morning to present more community development block grant business.
Daniel, would you mind introducing yourselves and the yourself and the the department you represent?
Certainly. My name's Dan Lyons, and I am the programs director at the Lebanon County Redevelopment Authority.
Thank you.
And the business I have for you this morning is related to the county's Community Development Block Grant Program, specifically as it relates to a special allocation of community development block grant funding that is coming to the county through the CARES Act. This is CDBG coronavirus money. This is a special CDBG allocation that was announced in May and that the the county is entitled to apply for. And the total amount of the the funding is $241,502. Of that amount, $75,350 is allocated to South Lebanon Township as an entitlement community. And South Lebanon Township has their own proposed funding plan for the for that money that their township supervisors approved last week. And I'm here to ask the commissioners to approve the county's funding plan, proposed funding plan, and to adopt the resolution authorizing the submission of this application. And so this will be an application to the State Department of Community Economic Development. And just to give you some context on this, we we held a public hearing in early June, shortly after the funding amounts were announced, to to gauge interest and assess need at that time as far as how the funding might be used. And this is this is CDBG money. So it comes with all the the usual CDBG restrictions. And for those who aren't familiar, what we typically do with our CDBG funding is things like road reconstruction, curb and sidewalk, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, residential demolition, all sorts of things that you wouldn't typically think of as being related to the coronavirus. So part of the struggle has been identifying ways we can use the CDBG money to either respond to or prevent or address somehow the coronavirus pandemic. And we held a public hearing to hear from members of the community and agencies about what their needs were related to the pandemic. Since that time, and that was early June now, other funding sources have been announced that may maybe better vehicles for some of the agencies to to receive funding to to respond to their specific needs related to the virus. And as a matter of fact, we only saw two agencies directly solicit these funds, and they were two of our regular CDBG subrecipients, being the Volunteers of Medicine, Free Medical Clinic, and the Lebanon Family Health Services Clinic. So what we're proposing to do with the rest of the money is basically set some aside into different different categories. One being to help individuals with rental assistance if there is a need, and another being to help small businesses with, you know, direct assistance for unreimbursed expenses related to the virus. Now, part of the the part of the reason why we're doing it so broadly is that we don't expect to have this money until January, and we expect that the situation may change quite a bit between now and then. So we didn't want to commit ourselves necessarily to specific program details when we expect the situation to change quite a bit. And as as Jamie mentioned, in the context of the drug and alcohol program, the the community and block grant funds, being a block grant, we will have the opportunity at any point going forward to modify the use of funds and to create new activities or move funds from one activity to another. So I would say that the the focus so much right now isn't on the specific dollar amounts associated with uses of funds as much as it is meeting the deadline with the Department of Community Economic Development to get the application submitted so that we can receive our funding on time, probably in January.
Thank you for that explanation. Motion to proceed.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
It's removed and seconded that we buy the CDBG grant application to access CARES money for Lebanon County eligible recipients as outlined by Mr. Lyons. Any discussion further? Jamie, was that a, no, you good? If no discussion needed, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Posed, so moved. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next, we have Representatives from Stifel.
So in the attendees, I see Brett Holland, we want to bring Brett in, and also Kevin Karen from Washington Crossing Advisors. Brett, anyone else?
Going to get some music, it looks like.
Brett, you're still muted.
Okay.
Hey, Brett's here, Mike's here.
All together, okay.
Sweet.
I can get the guitar too, if you'd like.
That's okay.
What kind of music do you play?
I didn't know that that was going to.
We have a time issue, but we'll have to put that up.
Next, country rock and roll, what is it?
Okay. So who's going to kick this off? Is it Mike?
I can get started, that's fine, sure. Thank you, Chairman. Today in attendance, myself, Brett Holland, Michael Battistelli, and Sonia Gross were here representing Stifel. Kevin Karan is here. I've seen Kevin before with Washington Crossing. He's a Senior Portfolio Manager. And in the portfolio for the pension, they represent about 13% of the overall assets. So he's going to share some comments at the end, and we'll, if you allow, we'll just kind of go through our normal procedure, and then Kevin will have comments at the end. So if you have your quarterly report, and I'm going to ask you to go to page one, it's the same page that we typically start with. You can find that. It'll say page one in the bottom right-hand side. And this report, if you're looking at it there, the top left says through 6/30, so it's through the second quarter. And Mike will have the numbers up through yesterday, year-to-date numbers a little bit more so. But this is up through the second quarter. On that top-left quartile of the page, top-left section of the page there, it has the combined portfolio showing the performance. And again, this is for the second quarter of this year. Quarterly performance was 12.62%. And then year-to-date performance, so that'd be the first six months of the year, was negative 3.82%. One-year numbers, as you can see, is 2.16. And then we have the three-year and since the inception numbers that are listed there as well. To the right of that, that line chart, we like to kind of touch base on a little bit there. Just showing at the beginning of the quarter, the market value at the beginning of the quarter was 111,276,740. Then we had withdrawals of about 2.1 million, appreciation or growth of 13.9 million, with an ending balance, again, at the end of the quarter of 123,145,725. The column to the right of that is just the one-year number. Again, beginning balance of 129 million. Withdrawals over the last 12 months of 8.6 million. Appreciation of 2.6 million, and again, with that ending balance of 123 million. Any questions with that initially at all?
I've none.
Okay. Bottom left-hand side is the last thing we'll touch base on. We mention this every quarter, our report does not break out the REIT portfolio, the Real Estate Investment Trust. Right now, it's showing down there as equities of 65.38%, stocks of 65%. If you break that down a little more granular, that percentage, excuse me, that's actually in stocks is 61.41%. And the REIT portfolio makes up 3.97, so around 4% is in the REIT portfolio. Showing equities, again, of 65, fixed income of 32.04%. And then cash position of 2.57%. And Mike's going to talk about updated numbers. It's a little bit outside of the investment policy statement, and we have a small recommendation that he's going to go over with that. Any questions on the portion that I shared today?
I've none.
No.
Okay, so the updated numbers I'm going to provide you, just keep in mind, these are un-audited numbers. The numbers that Brett just went over are actually audited. But this is as up-to-date as we can get it. So year-to-date, we're actually at a positive 2.06% year-to-date through yesterday. And the pension balance is 132,968,811. So we've had, obviously, we've had a tremendous bounce back from when the virus and the pandemic started, and we're thankful for that. I think, you know, as Brett alluded to, the allocation hasn't changed dramatically from the end of the second quarter. But as Brett alluded to, we are making a small recommendation because we have had a pretty good bounce back and because we are a little bit slightly outside of our investment policy statement, which, again, as a guideline, we should have at the high end 60% in equities, not including the REIT portfolio, but just straight equities. So our recommendation today is to take 2.6 million dollars out of the equities and actually put that into cash for future pension payouts, monthly payouts. We feel like this time, we've had a good comeback. We have an election on the horizon, not sure the outcome of that. And I think at this point, that will get us, we'll have enough cash on hand to get us into the beginning of the year. I think that might be a smart move at this time.
Mike, Commissioner Litz has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I am having a hard time. It's a very loud echo with your presentation. I want to make sure I understood it correctly. Did you say 2.6 million from REITS to cash?
No, from equities, not the REIT portfolio, just from equities, from stocks.
Equities, okay. From equities to cash. Is that what you said? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mike? Any objection to that change in, that adjustment, or?
I'll make a motion to adjust our portfolio to put 2.6 million dollars into cash from the equities.
I'll second the motion.
It's removed and seconded. Mike, do you have anything else you need to add to that?
No, the only thing I'll add is that, you know, we did receive, early in July, we did receive the annual ARK payment. I did want to recognize that. It was 3,158,684 came into the pension plan as well. So the annual payment was made.
Awesome. It's a good thing to be doing. The motion is to move into cash to cover expenditures and to get us more in line with our policy. Any further discussion regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Posed, so moved. Rated for the entertainer hour.
At this time, we're going to turn over the Rockstar, Kevin Karan.
Thank you. So I'm Kevin Karan, one of the Senior Portfolio Managers at Washington Crossing. We're responsible for almost $6 billion in total assets under management, and we are grateful to the county for continuing to work with us to help you manage your pension. Essentially, the way we've positioned the portfolio assets over the last few years has been with an eye towards quality, which to us means low debt, consistent cash flows, and companies that generate strong profitability based on assets, meaning profits before the distortive effects of leverage. And this paid off very well this year, and I just want to just give you a sense of what I'm talking about. If you look at the typical value manager through June, the typical value manager was down about 16%. And it has been a very difficult year for those, particularly for those parts of the market or those companies that are not particularly good quality. So if you look at what happened from December 31st through the March 23rd bottom, the best companies, the AAA companies like Microsoft and Johnson &amp; Johnson, for example, down 19%. But the sub-investment-grade companies, for example, companies that carried a single B rating, for example, were down 56% with the average company down about 30. So a big difference in terms of what happened on the downside, and that's, those numbers are staggering. So the amount of volatility that we saw in the first quarter was very significant. Fortunately, we've had a bounce back, which sort of evens things out. But we can't look past the fact that we're still in an environment that has tremendous amounts of volatility that needs to be managed. If we look at the bounce back, we'll see that through the end of July, those AAA companies were actually up more than 10%. But the single B companies, the lowest-rated companies out there, were still down 37. So it's really been a very differentiated market this year, differentiated along lines of quality. And it's worked very well for us because for the last three or four years, we've been continually pruning the portfolio and moving it more and more towards quality. The other big thing that happened this year was we came into the year with a considerable amount of cash north of 25%. As prices came down, we're always looking out three to five years when we're assessing the value of a company. And as prices came down, all of a sudden, there were things that came, became better buys for us. So starting in March, we were able to put money out during, all during the month of March. And we put money out and bought companies like LabCorp, Alphabet, Google, Cognizant, Snap-on Tools, Intel, Henry Schein. These are all companies, if you go, if you look at them, they're going to have less than about 30% debt in the capital structure, lots of free cash flow, very strong profitability. And we think that holding companies in this environment that can get through to the other side of what eventually could be a difficult period is really paramount to us here. We're still looking at a market that's fairly expensive. So it's important to us to celebrate the fact that the economy is getting better, acknowledge that, but recognize that there are still risks out there, there's still a lot of debt that has been accumulated in many companies out there. And we want to continue to be very mindful that quality is very important, particularly when times get tough. So we're going to continue with that emphasis on quality. We're still largely fully invested at this point in time. But we would be willing to take cash off the table if we found that there was, if we were no longer able to make the bullish case that we're making today.
Very good. Any observations or questions from, yes, Jamie?
Since you did that in March, you were able to get some values when the market was down. Now that it's bouncing kind of up against, you know, a record market, it just seems for the last few weeks to be hanging there. Do you have a, will you have a tendency to pull some of that back out? Because you're traditionally, you're a hold cash kind of a manager.
Yeah, the thing that would lead us to do that would, well, there's a couple of things that would happen. Number one, if we saw that their forward-looking expectation, if our expectations for their future profitability were actually to start to come down, that would be a cause for concern. The other thing that I really need to point out is that a lot of what's driving value today is, are two things at the market level. Number one, you have interest rates, risk-free rates, that are at essentially record-low levels. And what that does is it raises the future value of earnings, all else being equal. And then the other thing that's happened is that investors who have been, where confidence has been buoyed by very supportive fiscal and monetary policies, coupled with some trends lately that have been obviously better than they were in the spring. Those factors, improving confidence, very low, a very low Treasury bond yield, is helping to support valuations. In time, that could change, and if we had, if those factors changed, we would reassess our our intrinsic value for the companies that we own. And that could be another thing that could lead to change in what we hold. But we're staying with where we are right now. And the one thing that I point out, if you think about it along two dimensions, there's one question, which is always going to be, where are we going to get the highest return? So in March, when prices were very low, that was the question that led us to put money to work. But then there's another dimension about this that has to do with the quality of the assets that you hold. And while many managers say that they're focusing on quality because that's a very good marketing tactic, you'll find that many of them don't really follow through on investing in companies that have very flexible balance sheets or have lots of cash flow, lots of consistency, the kinds of things that really engender quality to us. So we have to always think about those two things. We're essentially fully invested right now. We have the ability to hold cash if we're concerned about valuations. But we're more concerned at this point about the quality and nature of the companies that we own. And that's where we're operating more in terms of making choices between companies.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, appreciate the clarity that you delivered your report. We're very well acquainted with the concept of volatility management, so we could relate your report very well. Anything else for the good?
That's all we have.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate your attendance and. Yep, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike Anderson is out there in the queue. Bring him in. Mike's going to be asking for action from both the Election Board and the Board of Commissioners. The Election Board is the procedural, procedural part of it. And then if you, if you move beyond that, then there's a, there's a cost or an expense side of things that is the responsibility of the Board of Commissioners. So you probably want to convene the Election Board first, is that right, Michael?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to call the Board of Elections to order for special business today.
Good morning. Michael, good morning. Michael Anderson, Chief Clerk, Voter Registration. I am here today to request, can you hear me okay? I'm here to request approval from the Board to change what we're going to do here in November as far as printing and mailing our ballots. One of the things that we looked at after the primary was the ability to, you know, would our staff have the ability to do what we did in the primary, which was to keep this in-house? And one of the things that we found was that we worked a lot of hours, had to bring a lot of people in at the last minute just to accomplish the primary, to get the mail and absentee ballots out in time, where we did 15,500 ballots. And looking at our estimates for the general, we're looking anywhere between 30,000 to 35,000 mail-in and absentee ballots that will be needing to go out. And with that said, we realized pretty quickly that with the processing that we're going to have to do in the office in its own, would prevent my staff from even being able to stuff or do the ballots internally. So we were able to, thanks to Jamie, have a contact with David A. Smith Printing, went to them, talked to them about what they could do for us. I actually visited their facility, talked to Dolphin County, Jerry Feizer, the director there, who used this company in the primary, was very impressed with their operation. And basically, what they do is they are a ballot printing and fulfillment company. So basically, what they can do is not only print our ballots, but they can print all of the envelopes that we would need. print our ballots but they can print all of the envelopes that we would need and the instructional sheets and they will the fulfillment part being that they will then stuff those ballots and then mail them based on the file that we would send to them every day and then there would be a file that comes back to me that would show what would be mailed and then there would be a that's how we would check to make sure the information that we sent them is what went out and everything is correct so what I'm asking the board at this point is to consider and I gave you the proposal and the contract that like coming county did went through the process at this point for the general David A Smith is going to be printing ballots and do this fulfillment process for Dolphin County Berks County like coming county a limited version in Union County and then also requesting us here in Lebanon County and so I gave you the proposal the cost of a dollar fifty per per ballot and I'm requesting that as much as I would love to be able to keep it here I just it's just not feasible there's just not enough hours in the day for us to keep this in a presidential election locally so we went to see and I was it was very important for me for us to pick somebody that has had experience with this and did it well there were some counties that had used the service and had a lot of issues Dolphin County had none that was that was important to me because just to use any printer to take over this important thing was something that I felt needed to have some experience with and like I said when we visit them very impressed with that so feel like I'm rambling sorry so at this point I'll kind of leave it to the board if you have any questions and you have my proposal to implement this and this would just run through the end of this year this would be only for the November 2020 election.
Commissioner Ames I have a question.
Yes do you want to get a motion on the floor first?
Sure I'll move I'll move that we adopt this request of Mike's for this particular election coming up.
Second.
All right I have a motion and a second and Commissioner Phillips has a question to start off.
Yeah I my reluctance initially was because we are we're not using a Lebanon County printer and it was explained to me and I think Mike touched on it that you know we need to go with someone especially for the scale of this coming general election that we don't want to be in a position to have someone misstep or not get it get it right the first time so we have.
Excuse me I don't mean to interrupt but there's some sound maybe Dawn's on the phone do you mind muting her chat? That way we can understand Commissioner Phillips better thank you much better thank you.
So my you know initial when I saw that they were a Harrisburg based printer was that we need to use local printers if they're available and they can do the quality work so you are agreeing that at some point after this election you will be revisiting it to look at local printers so that we can you know get get someone on board that we can use use locally but in this case because of the the issue of having it having it done it before and done it well before I'm going to support what you're asking for my other issue is that you mentioned a whole bunch of other counties that are going to be using are you certain I know they'll do three shifts if needed and so on that they would be overtaxed because of the proliferation of the mail ballots?
Yeah it's actually a conversation I had with them because we were concerned and I can tell you Dolphin County was concerned because they knew that these extra counties were coming on they have a very good plan in place like I said we visited there they did a shift and a half in the primary and they are willing and are going to probably go to three shifts and they are telling us that they're going to be able to handle this load and that when we send them these files they'll be able to print and then actually take it to the mail that same day which is actually much quicker than what we were able to do in the primaries so to answer your question yes you know I think they they knew we were all concerned about will they overtax themselves and I think at this point that they have done a very good job of answering that question and you know hopefully we have to kind of take them for their word on that but I feel pretty confident that they'll be okay.
Commissioner Litz do you have any questions?
Well um I was my question is more of a comment well I guess it is a question I was reviewing the July 20th July 7th 2020 contract with like coming county and at the bottom of page one it has Forrest Lehman as the Director of Elections I just wanted to make sure that Michael's name gets inserted in there so that we have control over turning over our own paperwork.
Yeah so good question so if you look at page five Article 17 additional purchasers I talked to Dennis Firestone our purchasing person here in Lebanon County because one of the things that we talked about is bidding and would we need to bid or could we piggyback on this contract that that provision there allows us to piggyback on this contract so what we'll do is addendum to them that has all of our information and then also designates me as the main contact person here for Lebanon County so that will be addressed.
Okay.
Commissioner Ames can I pose a question?
Sure.
Or maybe just a request when Commissioner Phillips was talking about printing and using you know potentially using local printers looking into that I just want to maybe Mike it would help if you walk through for a few few seconds the the process so this is an on-demand printing addressing and mailing service correct and so it's that's why the 24/7 because as you feed the applications and the individuals who are requesting an absentee they meet that demand instantly there is that fair?
Yes and and actually one of the when we actually talked about multiple counties it actually works in our favor because there's a minimum amount of ballots that they have to be able to nail to get the pre-sorted rate that gets us a cheaper rate on the postage end and so as you had said talking through basically what happens is we enter everything on our side for the day we send them an electronic file at the end of the day which then they take and and we could send it whenever end of the day beginning of the next day but they take that file and then that's what they use then to print and it's basically on-demand and that will save us money here in the county because what we did is we had to guess estimate how many envelopes we needed how many ballots we needed when we were doing it in-house now we're only going to have to pay for what we need so they're going to take that file and then they will actually print those envelopes those instruction sheets that ballot and stuff it that day and then we'll take it to the post office directly in Harrisburg would actually will also save our voters time because it won't have to go through our mayor room here and it will get to the voter faster does that answer your question Jamie?
Yeah I just wanted to clarify those steps because if there is someone local who potentially could fill this role you know those those are the components that all need to be met or dealt with so.
And one of the things that I talked to Commissioner Phillips about is that it's the great unknown next year of how many people will will use this service and will it be something we think we can keep in-house or in the future will we keep needing to have a printer or fulfillment company and that's where I was saying like absolutely have no problem having a local company bid on this it's just we have to kind of see after 2020 pans out where we are how many ballots will need to go out because we really just don't know and we won't know that until next year but as you know Jamie I'm kind of a little bit of a control freak if we could do it here we're going to do it here but if we need help and we need to have this out for bid next year we'll absolutely do that and we'll look for a Lebanon County company.
All right since everyone else had their say I'll have mine as well I have been back and forth with Michael since this he first suggested this idea and I probably am the most apprehensive about taking anything outside our county voter office for any part of the voter process when as I'm sure my colleagues we have questions all the time about the the validity and the safety of our elections and I'm always proud and confident to say that I see the sausage being made here and I trust and value the folks that work in the voter department and as is true of any process the more of it you let go and put in the hands of others the more concerned you have to have about how legitimately and so on it's being handled and I myself have a real issue seeing what's happening with our elections in this country and this is a piece of it happening here in Lebanon County but in talking with Michael again I think he did his homework I understand the issue because again we watched the process play out with just a primary election so we know it's going to be significantly more a problem with this general election so Michael for all that might have concerns Michael assures me that these voters are all going to be accounted for on the back end when they send the list back to our our folks they'll verify everyone that that has gone out so personally I don't think it's ideal but it we're being forced to do this mail-in ballot from upstairs so we have to accommodate that and I certainly want to thank Michael for all the effort that he put into finding at least for this case the right contractor and making himself feel confident that that it's going to be legit and convincing me as well so there any other comment?
I guess I do have another question Mr. Chairman on page two of the contract it mentions that there is a general aggregate liability policy of $2 million is that per county or is that in total for all the counties they're representing well we have an additional $2 million general liability contract and everything that's underneath that?
I can find out for you I do not know right now I did ask our solicitor to take a look I did not hear from from him with any issues but I can.
That should be upped if there's multiple counties if that was just for one county.
No it's not for one county it's for the company itself so it's a it's a total liability of $2 million for all the work that they do am I correct Mr. Insurance Man?
That would be my understanding that this is to protect them as a business but you know I I would defer to to our solicitor.
We can check with the company but they'll typically probably add us as an additional short as as they insured as the other counties.
Right.
Yeah I want to make sure we're included and hopefully they up it some.
Well the only way they would up it is if you made it a condition of the contract and I'm not sure that we have time to put that into play at this.
So yeah thank you.
All right any other questions or discussion then I would accept the motion.
Commissioner I'm sorry I don't mean to interrupt you just the other part of of this and I want to make sure I touch base on it was the the printing of the poll book they gave us an estimated cost of that that is something that I think the board would need to also approve we do that internally now on with the with the mandate of having these watermarked based on how people apply and the application deadline going all the way to seven days before the election it is very very difficult for us to keep that in-house now because we we need to have we need to bring people in to actually help us print all of those for 60 precincts but then also based on when we were printing it because we couldn't do it our turnaround we couldn't do it you know in a day we had to then manually go through every book to make sure that they were watermarked correctly and by watermark I mean that they're marked that they received a mail-in ballot or if they received a mail-in ballot and it was returned so one of the things that I'm requesting is what we can do with this company is they in a 48-hour timeframe can turn out turn around our poll book for us and print it for us which would be excellent for us because it would save us a ton of time and it would be more accurate so part of what I would like the board to do is also approve the ability for us to use this printer to do to the to the poll book as well.
Then we need an addition to the motion.
An amendment.
An amendment to the motion to include the printing of the poll books?
I'll still amend.
Second.
All right all right then the total motion as I understand it would be to approve this Smith Printing to actually prepare the ballots the envelopes and do the instruction sheet do the stuffing and the and the mailing and then also to allow this company to prepare the the poll books ready for the election.
Point of order I believe you have to vote on the amendment and then the original motion.
Okay we'll do that then the amendment is to approve the the printing of the poll books all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed all right that motion is approved and now the original motion then to have them prepare the the ballots and so on all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed all right motion is approved Michael thank you and I.
Thank you.
Is that any anything else for the Board of Elections?
That's it for the board you just have to approve unless you have questions for me specific I can tell you just real briefly we're over 12,000 absentee mail-in ballots that are entered we have oodles oodles and oodles and oodles of printed applications waiting to be entered we're getting them by the the bin loads right now just for the public's knowledge the applications you are getting mailed to you are from third parties they are not from my office they are not from the Department of State the information is incorrect I apologize for that except that we have no control over it wherever they're getting these lists from are old outdated some people have been deceased for 15 years we're getting calls and I I wish I could do something to stop it but unfortunately I can't it says third party sending these applications directly to registered voters just know that is not us that is not the Department of State it is a third-party vendor that are sending these and if you have questions just call us directly but it's important for people to know that's not us because they get very upset that thinking that what are these people doing this person's been dead for 15 years and it's not us.
And isn't that election tampering Michael and can't these people be stopped?
So my understanding is no because they have the right to send these they look at it like I guess a mailer and and you know this is something over my my grade as far as you know legality of it but it's been happening for a long time as far as these places sending these applications the confusing part right now is that it's has my name on it as our our address on it to send back and people immediately think it's the election office sending it and what the heck are we doing this person doesn't live here this person's deceased and and that's the that's the what we're trying to get out there to people it is it's not us and unfortunately I don't know legally what we can do to stop it they're just not using updated databases which are out there I it it boggles my mind you know what what's going on I don't know I hate to think it's to person to to actually make it confusing to people but that's really what it's doing I honestly would love to see it not happen at all but you know I understand the convenience of giving people the ability to do this but people are thinking they have to do vote by mail they do not they have the choice I don't know what to say commissioners is very frustrating.
Well is there I and I know it's certainly not a total answer but can we do some kind of a media campaign or something to make the folks in Lebanon County aware that this is really a not a valid process that's happening?
I would be in favor of that and I can talk to Jamie about doing something I know the department is well aware of our frustrations they're supposed to be using some type of media campaign to try to to write this as well a lot of people are thinking what they're getting are ballots as well they're not ballots actually won't be sent out until probably end of September. Uh, ballots actually won't be sent out until probably end of September, um, early October at the latest. So it's important for people to know everything they're getting right now is not a ballot. It is an application and that is why you're getting multiple applications is because multiple groups are sending them. Uh, yeah, I have no problem doing that. Some kind
I think we could get some public service uh cooperation from our media uh that we have left in the county to, I would, I would personally like to see you address that if you could.
Absolutely.
All right. Oh, do I have a motion to adjourn the Board of Elections?
Excuse me, I have a, a comment.
Oh, yes, Commissioner.
I was um, as I agree 100% that this is confusing people and that they have an absolute right to go to the polls to vote. But what I didn't gather from you, which I think is correct, and that's what I would like confirmation on, is that if they are a registered voter and choose to vote by mail, they can use the application that has been sent to them. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
That didn't come across to me when you were speaking.
Sorry, yeah, I just like so frustrated with the incorrect stuff, but yes, if, if everything's correct on, on that application, they're sending you, absolutely can use it and send it into us and many people have.
Okay, thank you.
All right. With that said, uh, motion to adjourn.
Some moves. Second.
All right, have a motion in a second. We stand that the Board of Elections stands adjourned.
Hey, so reconvene, reconvene our regular meeting.
Right. So immediately following that, then since the board approved to uh utilize that process for the uh absentee ballots, then the Board of Commissioners uh is responsible for, for the provision of these uh, or providing means for it. So Michael's gonna ask for your approval, I believe, on the contract with David A. Smith printing as, as the board.
Make your pitch.
Yeah. Uh, Michael Anderson, Chief Clerk, Voter Registration. Uh, so uh, yes, I am formally, since the Board of Elections have uh allowed us to use this David A. Smith printing for ballot fulfillment in printing um, and for poll books, I officially request that the Board of Commissioners approve the attached um contract with the request by Commissioner. Let's to get some clarification on the insurance part. Officially approve that contract so that we can report with, with this uh service.
I some move.
Seconded.
Hey, we have a motion, a second to approve the expenditure to cover the uh work of the uh, the Election Board. Any further discussion needed? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Michael.
Got a lot Thank you very much. I, I agree. I greatly appreciate uh the three of you agreeing to this. Um, you know, I know it's not easy uh to uh give up some of this control. Believe me, it wasn't easy for me either. Uh, but definitely want to say thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, I'm just gonna say, Michael, if, if we're expecting um, I don't know, 80% turnout on 88,000 voters and maybe half of them being male, this is a big step that we're taking in handing this over to a third party. So I just, you know, the, the gravity of this is on you to monitor it and make sure we get what we, what we're asking for. So enough.
I understand. I appreciate your faith in me and I will do my darndest to make sure that this is, runs as smoothly as absolutely possible.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
A question. I, I received something about two polling place changes. Are you not ready to move ahead with that?
No.
No, he didn't pick new ones.
Yeah, no, yeah. So we are uh, so I just trying to give the board um and just an FYI, we definitely have two that are going to have to be replaced. Uh, two that were, two of the three that were replaced in the primary. Uh, working on trying to finalize if we can use the same places we had before. Uh, I can go into details if you want me to. It's up to you, but
No, I just wanted to make sure you didn't forget them.
No, no, we're, we're still working and we're still waiting to hear back from, from all 60 polling locations just to make sure that we can still use them. So um, we're working on that and yes, that will come, come to you uh at some point in the future.
Thank you.
And the only thing I'll remind everyone is that uh by adding five polling places after the 16 election, um, of the five largest precincts, um, you know, our lines will be diminished uh significantly, especially when you factor in the uh the, the absentee ballot or the mail-in ballot. So anyway, that's all good for, in terms of participation. So, all right, Jamie. We are back to you.
Okay, uh, I'm, I'm gonna have a uh some information to put before you on the CARES grant applications and so on, but before we go to that, I need to uh defer over to uh Solicitor David Warner. So Jay, if you could bring Dave Warner into the meeting. Um, and this is, this is in regard to the settlement with uh, with the Governor's Office that has received so much attention here the last week. And uh, David's going to need your gratification of the approval of that settlement since it was originally discussed in executive session, bringing it to the, to the floor here. So go to Dave then if that's all right, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Yeah, and uh, Jamie, I apologize. I wasn't on the meeting at the beginning. Did you already announce the execu- executive session that occurred or no?
I did not.
Okay. So, so just to publicly announce and make part of our record here is that the Board of Commissioners met in executive session on Thursday, August 6th, uh around 11:30 AM uh to discuss a matter of litigation. Um, and in that meeting, due to the necessity and timing of, of the lawsuit that was pending, uh, the Board of Commissioners took an action by a vote of two to one uh with Commissioners Phillips and Litz voting in favor and Commissioner Ames voting against um, to enter into the agreement that resolved the county's pending lawsuit uh versus Governor Wolf in regard to the CARES Act uh funding. Uh, and I'm just looking simply today for the consent of the board acknowledging um that that occurred in that meeting and the authorization that was given uh by the two-to-one vote for Commissioners Phillips and Litz to then uh execute the settlement agreement. Um, so again, just, just simply, we are not looking for debate or discussion or reiteration of anything that occurred or the prior vote. We're just looking for affirmation that, that this did occur and we'll make that part of our record.
Does that affirm, come in a form of a, a motion?
I'll make a motion to ratify.
I'm just asking a question, Commissioner.
I'm sorry.
I'm asking for clarification if we need a motion or not.
Uh, yes, if, if you could, just to acknowledge that, uh, I, I would candidly take just the unanimous consent of the board that we're just making that part of the record again, not changing votes or revoting or anything like that. We're just affirming factually that this did occur on that date.
Okay, all right, Commissioner. Sorry to interrupt you.
So, no, that's okay. I didn't understand that you were asking a question. Um, I make a motion to ratify the signing of the um agreement with uh Governor Wolf concerning the CARES funds of $12.8 million. Uh, we ended the lawsuit.
I thought uh, uh Solicitor, we were looking just for an affirmation. Isn't that what the, the motion would address?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, and I, I hate to be overly technical here or picking the minutia, but yeah, I'm just looking for ratification that, that, that event, as I summarized, just did occur uh in the executive session as addressed.
Some move.
All right, we re
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We're, we're affirming uh as per our solicitor's request, any uh discussion here. If none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So two to one uh affirmed. Okay. Anything else, uh, David?
That's all I had.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Then if I could, uh, at this point, bring in, I know that some of our participants here on the uh, the working group for the CARES grant that I've been meeting with, uh, some of them I think have to leave for an 11 o'clock. So that, that's okay. We can, we can still get through it, but uh Jay, could you bring in Brooke Smith? Uh, Jennifer Cuzzo. Going down the list alphabetically here. Karen Grow. And Susan Everly. Okay. Okay, so um, Mr. Chairman, I, I just want to introduce these folks. Um, Jennifer Cuzzo is uh with, visit Lebanon Valley. Karen Grow with the Chamber, Susan Everly with Economic Development Corporation, and Brooke Smith with the United Way. I've been meeting with them for the last, um, I think better part of two months to come up with in anticipation of the CARES Act funding, the, the County Relief Block Grant, to come up with a process to distribute those funds out to the businesses, nonprofits, um, employers, municipalities, et cetera, that are eligible under the CARES Act block grant. And um, I, I, it's been a great group to work with. We did meet with you yesterday in a workshop just to to go over the work that's been done so far, the application, the frequently asked questions, the rubric for scoring the uh, the applications. And so um, we've had a chance to, to see that. You've suggested a few changes to those documents which were made since yesterday and were uh emailed to you and uh directly by Karen. And uh, hopefully today you, you're comfortable enough to, to approve those documents so that we can keep on moving and uh, and get this money out into the hands of the businesses that need it, nonprofits, et cetera. It's what we believe a, a fairly straightforward application, uh, total of three pages, which uh most of the third page is is uh certification by the applicant of a number of fine print requirements uh and so on. And um that would, that would be an online application. We will be utilizing among, among, uh, well, utilizing as many outlets as we can, but the Forward Together Lebanon website, uh, the county website, you know, various different places we can. I'm sure United Way, Chamber, EDC, et cetera, to direct anyone who's interested in applying for those, those funds to, it would direct them right back to the, to the application process. Uh, and it'll be an online application, but they can also fill out a, a uh hard copy application. Not all of the information is has been concluded or, or resolved just yet, but we have most of it. We have enough of it to, to get moving on an application and uh and start to get this in the hands of everyone. The FAQ at this point, I think, is about 36 frequently asked questions that we, that we compiled. Um, much of this, by the way, was with the help of Lancaster County. Lancaster County, as many know, received their funds, their CARES funds back in I think May already, um, and have done a pretty nice job of, of um doling out those funds, getting ready for it, you know, having the FAQ and, and the, these people that, that you're meeting with today have connections in those other counties with their own counterparts and have been able to, to lean on them for this information and, and those other, those other counties have been willing to share. So uh, we didn't start from scratch, but we did, we did tailor it in many ways to Lebanon County. And I, I expect that as we go, this will probably be tailored even, even further as the process evolves and as we learn and we're going to do, I believe, two rounds of this. So after learning some things in the, in the first round, hopefully we, we can modify it or fine tune it for the second round. The allocations, I, I think that uh that you're familiar with are being made available here are $3 million in small business grants and PPE distribution for employers under 100 employees. Uh, 2.25 million in grants and PPE to tourism, tourism-related businesses and county fair. And, and the county fair, 2 million for uh the same for nonprofit 501(c)(3) and 501(c)(19), which are specified in the in the CARES Act as those two nonprofit categories. And $1.5 million in the, for Economic Development Corporation efforts toward promotions and, and uh, the Forward Together Lebanon. So uh, that's the, the overview of it. Uh, again, hopefully we were able to hash some things out yesterday in the workshop so that you're comfortable with these, these documents and uh huge thanks to these four uh, four people who've helped, helped us along. Um, the reason behind leaning to them is that, is their experience with business, obviously with the Chamber and, and Susan, uh, experience with with nonprofits through Brooke and the United Way who deals with nonprofits and does these, this money out uh, or their money out on a, on an annual basis. And of course, Jen has a lot of links to her members and to all of the businesses who were involved with tourism in Lebanon County. So, and I just say, I want to qualify that even though these organizations were involved in the creation and development of this program, uh, anyone who applies does not need an affiliation with these organizations. That's something I know that the Commissioners, you have fielded that question already from some people who were aware of involvements in these trade organizations and that's not a requirement. It's just that their knowledge and their, their base was useful in, in developing this program. So um I'll try and, and cut myself off there and, and I'll, I'll leave it to any of the four of you if you want to add anything to this that I may have overlooked or, or missed mentioning.
Before we take input from the uh other folks, Commissioner Litz has a question or a comment?
Okay.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I was wondering, uh, was the I want to say corrected, but a, adjusted application that we discussed yesterday, was that mailed out? Um, or it, cause I didn't get it. Did it go to the county perhaps? I haven't had a chance to review it.
Yeah, it, it's probably in your, your county email.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so any vote we take would be subject to my, be able to look at that because I haven't seen the corrections. And I know Karen's very good, but I still would like to reserve the um option of reviewing that.
Karen, do you want to verify just a couple of changes you made?
Absolutely. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, I did email all of the Commissioners last evening to your uh county email addresses. So they were sent probably about 7:30, 8 o'clock last night.
Yeah, I can't access that.
But you could this morning.
No, I was preparing for today's and I didn't see it in my inbox.
Karen, there were just a few. Do you want to, do you mind just uh verifying what they were?
What the changes were?
Yeah.
Yes. So on the application, we added numbering to all of the questions and sections so that they were easier to reference. We um took out anything in the rubric related to um minority-owned or women-owned businesses. And on the FAQ, again, we gave page numbers to it and changed a few things just for clarity. And we also additionally, we added the county seal to both documents.
That sounds like most of the things we talked about. Thank you, Karen.
Okay. So any of the members of our working group want to uh touch on something I may have missed or, or add, add something? Were we? No? Tell me I hit it all? So uh, let me just briefly go over, I guess, schedule, rough schedule, hopeful schedule for this. Uh, we, we hope to, because of all of these, all of these organizations are getting a lot of questions and, uh, about when is this going to happen? When's it going to be available? Our hope is to put this out uh for the first window of an application period from September 1st to September 15th. This is not first come, first served. It'll be two rounds. Um, and it doesn't matter the size of the employer in either of those rounds. Some, for some who may have noticed in Lancaster County, their first round was for employers that have one to 20 employees and the second round was one to 100. We're gonna do both rounds wide open for any size employer. So the first one, September 1st to September 15th, close of application on the 15th. Uh, hopefully be able to review those and make award announcements by September 30th. We will then give ourselves a, a two-week period to readjust and, and fine tune anything from the first round that we may have learned. and then reopen the app, another application period on October 15th and go to October 30th with that window. And then take some time to review the applications, award them by November 15th. And at that point in time, it's built into the CARES Act that that all counties are to sort of, you know, take take account and see how much money reconcile and see how much money has been, has been spent, how much has not been spent. Submit that number then on to the, on to the, to DCED. They will then put that back into the mix and reallocate the money back out to counties by formula that is contained in Act 24 passed by the state legislature. So we have, you know, a September, October, November period here to do this, and then it'll be revisited. The CARES Act says that all monies must be spent by December 30th. That's the deadline built into the CARE, CARES Act. That's a really compressed timeline for not only, particularly for us, being a little late in the game here, receiving the funds, but but even counties who have had their money for a month now are, you know, clamoring for more time. It's my understanding that the, that has been a discussion at the state level. However, it really needs to be done at the federal level by the, by the, by Congress to extend that, since the CARES Act is a federal act. There is a bill that's been introduced. It's bipartisan bill introduced by senators from Iowa and New Hampshire to extend the CARES Act to the end of 2021 by a full year. So we won't know that probably until December, if that, if that actually happens. So that would certainly be advantageous for everyone to have more time. I guess it's, it's, it's understandable that when they were debating and approving this act back in March and April, that that seemed like a lot of time to get this done and out there. But, you know, time's passing quickly and it's going to be a real challenge. So that's the timeline, two rounds, two weeks of of open windows to apply. So, Commissioner Litz, I think, has a question.
One more question, please. Karen, on the Forward Together, was that ironed out with our Solicitor? Or David, have you reviewed that and made a recommendation?
No, I can answer that. No, not yet. It was, you know, end of the day yesterday and Dave was in court this morning.
It was a lot. Yes, I understand. I just wondered if there was a recommendation yet.
Yeah.
He could do where?
Yes.
He's aware, and I've provided the the application to him to look over for the, for the.
So there might be some adjustments yet.
Subject to review.
Yeah.
And I see the logo is prominently displayed. Thank you, Karen, along with everything else. A good update from yesterday. And so, Brooke, did you have a question? Okay, anything else? We can move to it.
We just.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to have the the panel move forward with the application process considering the information that we've received and adjustments that may be made going forward.
I'll second that motion.
And I, sorry, Commissioner Ames, was the subject to approval of our Solicitor in that as well?
No, I guess it wasn't.
Just.
Well, I said, subject to changes going forward, so.
Yeah, that could have encompassed that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on the motion? So this would include the FAQs and the consent from the application, all the things we.
In the scoring rubric, as it was presented.
Yep. Okay. All right. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you very much for all your work. And this, this really does get us in on pace with other counties that got their money four weeks ago. So, thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
We'll be in touch.
Then I have a few things to present to you. Let me get this stuff out of the way. I'm going to keep moving along here. You've got the MPO transportation meeting at 11:30. Okay, I have four applications for county liquid fuels aid to be granted by by the Commissioners, the first being for Myerstown Borough for $3,062 for general road maintenance in Myerstown Borough. Cleona Borough is looking to pay Beach Alley project that will cost them $5,500, and their allocation by formula would be $2,080. Richland Borough would be using their aid toward general maintenance, $1,519. And Jackson Township would be using theirs for line painting, which is a total project cost of $17,000. They would receive by formula $8,163.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquid fuels request as presented.
I'll second the motion.
We moved in second that we distribute those liquid fuels to Myerstown, Cleona, Richland, and Jackson Township as requested. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Okay. Before I move on to these hotel tax grant fund applications, have you each got an opportunity to look over those? And would you like me to present those today? One of them was pretty recent here. It just came in a couple of days ago. I don't know when. I had two, one's from Community Health Council of Lebanon County and one from the Campbelltown Community Alliance.
I'm good. Let's proceed. If others can discuss as we go or see if we get a motion second. What's your pleasure, Commissioners?
I'm okay with it. I've, you know, I've reviewed them. The second one is small, so I'm prepared to move forward.
All right.
You had a chance to see them?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
All right. Which one do you want to do first, Jamie?
First one, I'll do them in order. I think here the yeah, the Community Health Council of Lebanon County, through Executive Officer Nicole Marr, is requesting a grant for a program, a project called Lebanon Walks. And it's promoting walking throughout Lebanon County by designating routes in various communities throughout the county that people can access information and publications that will show them where those walkable routes are to be used not only for wellness, but also if, you know, people from out of town want to walk through Anvil, walk through Myerstown, those sorts of things, you know, and see the communities and see what's available in terms of retail and shops and so on. The total grant there is $2,000 that they're requesting toward that Lebanon Walks project.
I'll make a motion to approve the tourism grant or the Lebanon Health Council for $2,000.
Second emotion, and I have a question.
Go ahead with your question.
Thank you. Um, there's $2,000. I know it's not an extreme amount of money, but I'm a little concerned. We're buying T-shirts for residents, and I don't understand how that has to do with bringing people into Lebanon County when it, when it goes to tourism, if that makes sense. And it just seems like, I don't know that that's falls into the spirit of the tourism grant, buying buying T-shirts for locals. Am I reading it wrong?
Probably in a gray area there.
I'm, I'm seeing in the last, second last paragraph on their description that they would use the money to promote the walks on social media and in local news outlets, also incentivize walkers with small raffle prizes. Is that?
It's enough for me to support it, but and I guess we'd be waiving the 25% match. Is that assumed?
I don't think, I can check with Nikki, but I suspect it's an in-kind match. I mean, it would be talking about about $400.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. All right, go on to the second one.
Second one is the Campbelltown Community Alliance. Jennifer Bushdough, President of the Alliance. The, the request for the hotel tax grant here is entrance signs for the village of Campbelltown. They would be placed at the east and west sides of the village on Horseshoe Pike, 322. I believe as part of the application, they gave some renderings of what those signs would look like, utilizing a trolley for their emblem. Referring back to the to the Campbelltown trolley that went through town, and they talk a little about that in their, in their application materials. Total project cost for this signage is $8,000. They're requesting $6,000 and will be matching their requirement with cash toward the project funds that they have on hand.
I'll make a motion to approve the Campbelltown grant for signs for, with the trolley on it.
Second the motion.
It's been moved in second that we approve this request for $6,000 from hotel tax. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So moved.
And then lastly, I have two requests for exemption from real estate for disabled veterans. They are Larry Benner of Guilford Street, Lebanon, and Douglas Mall of Harps Drive, Lebanon, having met the requirements of the program verified.
I'll make a motion that we grant the two disabled veterans exemption from their real estate tax.
I'll second that motion.
We moved in seconded. We have any discussion? If not, all in favor, the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So ordered. Thank you.
You have MPO, as I mentioned before, and you have Assessment Appeals this afternoon at 1:30, which is also linked, it's a meeting, but also linked on the county website as the others are.
Very good. We'll stay on a little bit.
All right. Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We stand adjourned.